Special meeting of the City of Navasota City Council on 22nd January at 4:33 PM. And we move to item number two, which is workshop to discuss the City of Navasota Home Rule Charter amendments as proposed by the Charter Review Committee. Mr. Weeks?
Mayor, Members of Council, back in September, October, you agreed to appoint a five-member Charter Review Committee for a charter election for the amendments related to our Home Rule Charter in May of this year. Those members met all the way from October through December, concluded in December, went over summarization of those recommendations to amend the Home Rule Charter. Legal counsel has drafted up a red line version, which I, you should have in your packet. It's actually, I considered it a blue line version, this is the way it came across, it was blue lined. In addition to that, legal counsel has summarized, so we don't have to go line by line like the Charter Committee did. But the Charter Committee did an awesome job. We met with, it was, you know, sometimes a couple hours. I think one time it was after eight that we left, so they really did put their time and effort into it. And really appreciate staff as well as the committee and all their efforts. And it was, it was, it was a good experience and I think they learned a lot along the way, too. A lot of questions asked. They did elect, or I guess Ashley did volunteer to be the spokesperson for that, for them, and so I'm gonna have, if we'll turn to the summary of the proposed amendments for the Navasota City Charter. I'm gonna let our legal counsel, Carrie, start out with the first two paragraphs, and then after that, it's gonna be a tag team between Ashley and Carrie to go over each article. And if you have any questions, there are gonna be some that we need to probably dive into the actual wording. And once we get into those wording, either Ashley or anybody a member of the committee, because we do have some other committee members here as well, our legal counsel can answer those questions. So this time, Carrie, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jason. Mayor of Council, the first two paragraphs describe proposed changes that appear throughout the charter. So as you read through the charter, you're gonna see grammatical changes.
Microphone.
Sorry, chime up here?
No, because it's...
Do I have to press the button up here?
No, 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 you can just pop.
Okay. So throughout the charter, you're gonna see grammatical changes, you're gonna see changes that modernize language. There were some antiquated terms that the committee felt like would be better for those to be changed in the charter. There are references to laws that are obsolete. Either they've been amended or codified into a different provision in the state law. And so you're gonna see throughout the charter, you're gonna see changes that are more, just kind of not necessarily insignificant, but modernize language, change the grammar, make it easier to read. One of the goals of the committee was to make this easier to read for the general public and get rid of some of the antiquated references and some of the obsolete laws and language. And so you're gonna see those changes throughout the charter. Those have all been redlined, too. Those types of changes can be addressed in two propositions. We're not gonna have to have a proposition for every little change.
That was my question.
So, yeah, don't worry. We're gonna, we're gonna combine all of those changes into, really, I anticipate two propositions. One that will deal with changes due to alterations in state law, amendments to state law, and then, and those types of changes, and then changes that deal with grammar, punctuation, those types of corrections, modernizing language. And so when we, when we draft the ballot language, two propositions ought to come out of all of those changes. And so, and we can talk about this later, but that would be the next step, once we get direction from council, about what changes you want, then we'll get to work drafting the ballot propositions that, to present to the voters for them to approve or not approve the changes that council would like to see made to the charter.
Good. Ashley, I ask you to come up and start out with, we'll start out with Article Two, municipal boundaries, because there was no significant revisions in Article One.
Well, you took the easiest one away from me. And for the record, I was voluntold to have this position, but happy to do it. Like Carrie said, the goal when we were meeting for the last several months was to make this more digestible. So you'll see, you know, we cut out a sentence here or even paragraphs if we felt like it was redundant. So my game plan is to go through the summary instead of going line by line, like Jason said. But if you have a question, and neither Carrie or I, or if you have a question that isn't gone into far enough in this summary, then either Carrie or I, or maybe one of the other members, can go deeper with you guys on it. I've got all of my notes from the meeting, and I'm sure Carrie does, too. So if you have any questions for me, just let me know and we'll go from there. All right, Article Two, the first change that was made is in Section Two, extension of boundaries. So Carrie told us that the law has changed pretty significantly when it comes to annexation of the boundaries of Navasota. And so we updated the language, or Carrie updated the language to match what state law is. The gist of it is that the city can't just unilaterally go out and annex anymore. It's gotta be based on the agreement and the proposition of the folks that are seeking to be annexed and then could be put up to a vote, and so on, and so on. But basically, Section Two was updated to reflect the change in law, and that was the whole reason behind it.
I'm gonna just make a point for the record, and it'll apply to this and to many others, but just for the record. We can thank our legislature, our state legislature, for shortening our charter, basically, and also taking away a lot of powers of municipalities. So, go ahead.
That was something that we ran into quite a few times. And you will see in here several times where we either eliminated a section or changed a section just straight up to match what the current legislation is. So, number, the next, we move on to Section Three. Any questions on Section Two? All right, Section Three. So we deleted Section Three, basically, because that is addressed, is in state law. So again, what I talked about, we tried to make this thing digestible and short. So if it was covered in state law and it doesn't need to be covered in this charter, we deleted it. Then that's all I've got for Article Two. Any questions on that?
And I would just add on Section Three, Section Three really referenced state law anyway, so...
Yeah, local government code.
So it might as well be deleted if that's the provision that's gonna be...
Yeah, it doesn't need to be long just to be long.
Correct.
Exactly.
That's right.
All right, I'll move on to Article Three, which is corporate powers. So the first thing that I have of significance is in Section Eight. And Section Eight is talking about liability for damages. So what we came up to, and I, the first time I read this, I remember asking Carrie, basically, what is this language? Because it basically provided for all of these different steps that had to be taken in order for the city to maybe have liability or a person have liability. So basically, Carrie suggested that we deleted Section Eight A and Eight B because you can't, you can't basically change your liability in your charter. Your liability is what it is according to the state law. And you can't in your charter come in and go, no, 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 we're not liable. You have to do X, Y, and Z in order for us to be liable for something. So we deleted Section Eight A and Eight B. And I believe that's it on Section Eight. Any questions about that?
Nope.
All right. Next significant change that I've got is into Section Twelve, which is zoning. So what we did in this is we proposed deleting this because we didn't want to basically bind planning and zoning by the charter. We wanted planning and zoning to be able to make their own qualifications and make any necessary changes as Navasota grows without having to amend the charter. So we wanted this to be addressed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we are recommending deletion of Section Twelve that deals with basically how we're gonna plan and zone the city and leave it to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Well, question, it was already fairly open saying no more than seven, but I guess are you addressing if it could possibly have the need to go to more than seven?
I think it's on population, though it will.
Well, I guess, maybe.
Yeah, Ashley said that the thought process behind deleting this was to let the council exercise discretion in terms of what P and Z looks like, qualifications, those sorts of things. And so instead of having the charter...
It's not something that has to be in the charter?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I'll say, one of the other things we were throwing around, too, before we decided to recommend deletion, was that the number of years that folks on planning and zoning could be on. It was suggested that we maybe change it to three years instead of two years to have some continuity there. So we were talking about making some changes to it, and then we came up with the idea of, well, why don't we just delete this and let the council make those decisions if they need to be made, rather than having to come and update the charter every couple of years.
And my understanding, this was the only board of commission that was addressed in the charter?
Oh, okay.
That's my recollection, yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that looks like it's it for Article Three. Any questions before I move on to Article Four? All right. So Section, Article Four, Section Two, the, what we did on that, we, it basically says, the original language says, "And to be compensated as herein provided." And so what we did was, we suggested that, we basically clarified that you guys don't get compensated. You're welcome. So what we were running into was some confusion, because the language there said, "We'll be compensated as herein provided, but there is no compensation." So we didn't want some confusion about, are they compensated or are they not?
I thought that had been taken out, but obviously wasn't.
Well, we took out, we took out what the compensation was.
Yeah, yeah, just, we must've just missed.
Five dollars a meeting.
We must've just missed that little part, yeah.
So we just tried to clear up any confusion that there might have been about any compensation for you guys. So I know y'all were really worried about that, so we fixed it for you. Section Three, so this was, there was some request from the public about this issue. What we are recommending is a filing fee of $100 for anyone who is requesting to be put on the ballot for city council. There's also a way that you can, just like any other election, where you can get signatures on a petition if you're unable to afford the $100 fee. But this was something that was brought up, I believe, by the public and the, and the group of us as a whole kind of felt this was a good idea to keep people from walking in and going, hey, I'm running for this position and causing perhaps the incumbent or somebody else who was thinking about running to put forth all of this effort for the person who said they were gonna run to not actually do anything. This gives somebody some skin in the game.
A little buy-in, yeah.
And so perhaps it will discourage folks from saying they're gonna run unless they're serious to do it. And we also put some language in there, I believe, that that money, any money that is collected for filing fees is going to go directly to elections, will be paying for any of the cost of elections.
Did you do any research or anything about other cities by chance?
Some, yes, sir, sure did, yeah. Some cities have this type of a requirement.
Okay.
So it's not uncommon.
No, no, unusually.
Some cities don't. It's just, you know, up to the local electorate in the city council in terms of recommending that. So it's not an uncommon provision at all. In fact, it's so common that the election code does have a provision in there that tells you how many signatures you have to obtain to be on the ballot.
I'm sure it would have that option, for sure, yeah.
Okay.
So the fee of $100 or in lieu of a certain amount of signatures?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
And do we know what that number's gonna be?
Twenty-five? Was it twenty-five?
Twenty-five voters.
Twenty-five voters. The state law says, or one-half of one percent of those that voted in the last mayoral election, but we don't have that.
And I'm glad it's saying voters, too, because that's important as well.
Yes, absolutely.
So twenty-five, we just came up with numbers, and instead of doing...
And that can be adjusted, you know, but I think that's a good, good round number.
Okay. All right. Let's see, Section Five is the next potential change. So one of the things that we haven't gotten to yet is, so we are, one of the things that we're gonna recommend is a term for you guys of three years instead of two years. And so if that is something that you guys pass or approve to be put on the ballot, then that changes how y'all are elected, the vote that's required. So a majority vote is required instead of a plurality. So we've added that language in there about how y'all are elected, if y'all choose to move forward with the three-year terms, and if that gets approved by the voters. And that's state law, I believe.
Correct, that's exactly right. Once you exceed two years' terms of office, then the candidates have to be elected by a majority vote.
Yeah, the three-year part just comes up later.
Yes, exactly. We haven't gotten to that yet.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but we'll get to it, but that's a part of the three-year issue that we'll get to down the road. All right, Five A, runoffs. This was a masterpiece by Carrie. We, we went on about, basically, what happens if, what happens if nobody gets a majority? So what happens if we've got a runoff of more than two people? What if we've got three people that are in the runoff? How do we decide who wins that? And so Carrie found, I believe it's, state, was it state law that you have to...
That's right.
Okay, it's like multi-paragraph how the runoffs are gonna go.
Runoffs, there's a process that have to be, that has to be followed. And so, you know, we were, Ms. Richardson brought up the possibility that you may have a three-way tie. Well, what do you do in the event of a three-way tie? And so there's a way to deal with that. It's numerically possible, and so we had to address that. First, you do a recount, and if that doesn't resolve it, there's an automatic recount first. And then if that doesn't resolve it, then you, you know, then you draw lots. And so there is a, the process that is set out in state law, this addresses that process. And so if, if, since you're required to be elected by a majority vote, and, you know, if there are two candidates that tie, then you have a runoff. If there are three candidates and nobody gets a majority, then you have to have a runoff vote of the two highest vote-getters. And if those vote-getters tie, then there's a process for determining the two candidates that advance to the runoff. And so all of that is addressed in here. But there, there were, it was kind of a spaghetti-shaped puzzle that we had to figure out and work through. But the, this process is set out in the charter provision, which will prevent, or will determine who moves forward to the runoff vote. And then if there's a tie in the runoff vote, then you draw lots to determine who is the winner after an automatic recount.
And I guess, would that happen through the county, or would it happen through our secretary's office?
The county.
If the county's running the...
Elections.
Elections, then it would be the county that would handle the runoff as well. And we'll make sure that any election agreement that we enter into them contemplates that they're gonna be handling the runoff elections as well, if that, if that is necessary.
It's probably similar to the way a county would do it, or the way you would do it in a state election, I guess.
And drawing lots, you'd probably do it right here.
Yeah.
I've seen it done.
Yeah.
It's happened in Texas.
It has happened.
I was gonna say, I think Jason told me about it.
Yeah, City of Dickinson, in fact, there was an article you probably just got this week about City of Dickinson.
All right, was that confusing enough? Any questions about runoff elections? All right, Section Seven, this is what I was just referencing earlier. So we are recommending that y'all's terms be changed to three years instead of two years. Similar to P and Z, what we were throwing around is continuity for the city. And with all the growth that's coming and all the changes that are gonna need to be made, we're looking at continuity for the city. So we're proposing, we're proposing that you guys consider a three-year term. So what took the longest was figuring out how to stagger you guys. Because y'all are currently on two-year terms and two-year election cycles, and it's staggered based on that. When you change it to three-year terms, everything gets kind of funky. So this was, again, this was, again, Carrie's work, that probably, I would imagine, took the longest of anything in this. So for places, let's see. Place one, beginning May 2024, place one will be for three years and continually after for three years. Let's see. Place two and three shall be for two years in May 2024, and then continuously thereafter for three years. Places four and five in May 2025 will start the three-year terms. So basically, place one, four, and five, at their next election, will start the three-year terms. Place two and three will have another two-year term before the three-year term begins. So that's how Carrie has figured out how to stagger you guys, so that we can get on to the three-year term schedule. But it does take a little bit of finagling because of the schedule that you guys are on right now. So if y'all, if y'all approve this to go to the voters, that's what the election cycles will look like for the next several years, before we get into those three-year terms. Okay? Okay, Section Eight, again, is changing the term from two years to three years for you guys. Let's see, Section Eleven, so Section Eleven deals with y'all's authority to remove a council member. So basically, it says that y'all can remove a council member as provided in Section Twenty-three, which is further down here. But that section says that y'all have the authority to remove a council member for misconduct and what's described in Section Twenty-three below. So it's basically giving y'all the power and then saying, we describe how you do it later on in Section Twenty-three. We wanted to make sure that it was clear that y'all had the power, if somebody needed to be removed, for y'all to do that. Section Twelve is talking about vacancy. So again, with the change to three-year terms, if someone has, if y'all have a three-year term, then vacancies have to be filled by special election, unless the vacancy occurs within a year of the next election. So we just cleaned that up. And we also put in there that we wanted there to be a public notice to the public of the vacancy. There were some concerns, I think, about someone being appointed to fill in the vacancy and nobody knowing about it. So we just wanted there to be notice to the public, hey, we've got a vacancy. There's gonna be an election, or there's, you know, possibility of appointment. If you feel like you're qualified, here's your notice to come do what you need to do in that case. So we put a requirement upon the council and upon the city to make that vacancy known to the public.
Yes, I think, one of the things that the committee wanted was an application process. So not just council coming up, hey, I had somebody that said they were willing to serve. Well, go through an application process.
I think that's the way the county does it.
With that, is the $100 filing fee would be enforced on that, too?
So, right, sorry, go ahead, Carrie. I was gonna say, the $100 filing fee is just gonna be to be put on the ballot? So if we're talking about someone being appointed, then that's not going to apply, because we're not dealing with an election cycle and people doing all that.
So if it's more than one year, it would apply, but if it's less, it would not?
If I'm understanding it correctly, Carrie, because if it's more than a year out, we've gotta have a special election for it.
Correct. If there's less than a year left on a person's term, then the council can go ahead and make that appointment. And the charter language actually leaves the details about what that application process and notification looks like. So, you know, as a council, you could say, okay, we've got this vacancy, here's how we're gonna do it. We're gonna publish it on, you know, social media, we're gonna publish notes in the newspaper, we're gonna... And so how that application looks is left to the council to take care of, and so you have some discretion.
That basically takes the place of the filing or the...
Yeah, that's right, application for place on the ballot, that sort of thing. Yes, yes, sir. So, but as far as the special election goes, council member, yes. The person, you know, would either pay the $100 filing fee or get the required number of signatures, 25 signatures, to be on the ballot.
So you kind of clarify on the hundred, so the $100 is a way to, like we're talking about, make sure you have skin in the game. But for instance, if there are people that do not believe any opponent should be the only opponent. And so ideally, they'll just go, and I'm gonna sign up, because I don't want, I shouldn't, everybody should be opposed. And that, a lot of people don't understand that it costs thousands of dollars for us to hold an election. If you already wasn't really, I don't really care if I win or not, but I'm gonna put my name in there so that someone else is, is gonna be opposed, and so...
People that have done that.
And so the $100 idea is to, hey, I gotta put some money in there to put my, you know, skin in the game.
So I think on that one, the big deal on that one is the public notice. It's more particularly for that appointment process, but also for the special election, if it has to be had. We wanna make sure that everybody has noticed that this is an option, so that they can come forward if they feel like they're qualified. And speaking of qualifications, the, the next section is Section Twenty-three. So this talks about, y'all get to determine the qualifications of your own members. And that is not limited, it includes removing a council member. So y'all get to kind of make the, what we were talking about, the guidelines that y'all get to set for yourselves, what the rules are going to be for, I think one of the big ones was attendance, ethics. But y'all get to determine your qualifications. Say we've got someone who is seeking to be appointed, and y'all are in the appointment process, then you, as a council, get to determine what qualifications you're looking for. But if you've got perhaps a rogue council member, you guys also get to make the determination on what requirements have not been met and what is a violation that would warrant that removal of a council member.
Do you have to call for a vote of censure for removal in that regard?
I don't think it would be a vote of censure. It would be, you know, you could go directly to...
Is that a process that you have to go through? You can go directly to it?
I think there would be a process where you would present the reasons to the council, and the council would, a majority of the council would need to agree with the reasons that were presented for that person's removal.
So let me give you an example. So let's say, I'm gonna go back in history, because this is a true live example. And so if you had a council, so you have a council member, the governor issues a statewide mandate, mask mandate, okay? And so the council adopts similar, hey, council members, while we're at the dais, you're gonna be wearing a mask. Something, council's agreed upon, that is your procedures to handle business. You got a council member that, I'm not gonna wear a mask. Well, so you provide that council member with multiple resources to participate in the meeting, but not up on the dais, whether it's Zoom or whatever that the state legislature is allowing you to conduct business. And then that council member comes, doesn't wear a mask, is asked to leave, but chooses not to participate at all, just leaves. And so now your district or your portion is not being represented. And so with that, you're not able to do business, because that, you have a section of the population that voted that person in and not representing them. And so with that, council can come and then say, okay, well, you can have, if you have three unexcused absences, then we move forward to removal. Okay? And so once council members have went across and they've got three unexcused and council member's absent, and you go through, hey, I got a council member, he's provided, city secretary or the mayor, a reason why they're gonna be absent, here's the reason, or given it to the council in secret, whatever it is, that, hey, he's got a health issue, whatever, or he's on vacation, and you approve that absence, that's approved absence. But then if you don't have, this is unexcused... don't have, this is unexcused, so that council member getting up and leaving and not willing to participate, that's, would be considered unexcused. You would have action to be able to do that. So, um, it does happen, it has happened, and so this will allow you, uh, to take action if that ever does happen.
Any other questions about that? All right, uh, section 27, this one is a little sig- more significant. Uh, so we changed the, um, the enactment of ordinances to require only one reading by the council. Um, so we, we were thinking of, I guess, economy here, um, what would be the best thing for the city. Is it the best thing for the city for, um, those things to be read at two separate meetings before they are enacted? Um, a- and so our proposal to you guys is that they only have to be read at one meeting before they can be, uh, approved and signed by you guys.
Are there some things that are required by the state to be presented to the public more than once?
There, there are a couple of things. Um, I think like, for example...
Franchises?
I'm sorry?
What, franchises?
Franchises was one.
Franchises, mhm, that's later in the charter. Franchises, um, would, would require multiple readings. There are certain things, for example, where if the, uh, EDC comes to you and wants to spend more than $10,000, the city council does have to enact a resolution on two separate readings, um, which really implies two separate meetings as well. Um, so there are certain things that are required. I, there, um, few in number, I would say, but there, there are certain things that, um, would not be impacted by this provision because state law would trump the charter provision. So, um, um, the answer is yes. It's the long way of saying yes.
But the run-of-the-mill ordinances only are gonna require one reading.
Correct.
Yeah, that'd save a lot.
And then, on that same note, we are recommending deletion of section 28. It provided for basically a faster way to get emergency ordinances or emergen- emergency measures, um, in front of you guys in past. And now that we're proposing changing, uh, normal ordinances and resolutions to one reading, then we don't need a section like that because all you gotta do is read it one time now.
Yeah, as long as it's posted within the notice.
Right.
Forty-eight hour, right?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Seventy-two hours, as long as you got that, you're good.
Okay, uh, section 31 is the next one. Uh, this was, again, Carrie and I shaking our heads at this. Um, section 31 basically says, um, what is admissible as evidence. And, um, all due respect, city in Navasota doesn't get to decide what's admissible, the judge does. So, we, uh, we recommended deleting that, uh, because in there it basically says that, uh, resolutions and ordinances are automatically admissible as evidence, but they're not necessarily. You've gotta abide by the rules of evidence, so we just, uh, recommended taking that out.
Mhm, yeah, the language is really strong. It's like, the court shall receive, it's like, okay, well, as Ashley said, we can't really do that, so.
I'd love to, to take this, uh, charter to a judge and see what he or she had to say about that. Um, all right, uh, next is section 34. We cleaned this one up a little bit based on, um, what is already being done. So this says that, uh, it originally said that the council gets to determine salaries and wages of appointive officers and employees of the city. We changed that just to appointive officers. My understanding is that employees of the city are fixed by the city manager. Uh, is that correct, Jason? Uh, so we changed that, uh, so that it's appropriate for what y'all are already doing. Uh, you fix the appointive officers, like the municipal judge and Carrie, um, and, uh, and then, and Jason, yes. Uh, and then Jason gets to do, um, the, uh, other employees.
Well, since the council has the authority on budget, so that could, would cover that if it were to be something to come up in that regard, so.
And, and I think we talked about that. Uh, so, but my understanding, that's what's being done. So, uh, we're just adjusting the charter to reflect that. Section 35 was talking about warrants for payment of claims, uh, and from our discussion, that's not being done by the city. That's not, um, how basically the city works, uh, and how they're currently doing things, how y'all are currently doing things. So, uh, we recommended, uh, deletion of that section. Uh, and it, it's talking about, uh, has to be an itemized, uh, invoice has to be submitted and audited and all that good stuff. Um, and my understanding is that's not how things are done.
That's correct. This is, you know, and warrants are antiquated, method of payment. And so this, this is really one of those obsolete provisions that, that we referred to at the very beginning.
Okay, that is it for article four. Um, any questions before I move on to article five? Article five, um, is Jason.
Uh-oh.
Um, and, uh, looks like we only have a couple of changes to that section, so, or to that article. So section one, um, this is a, a somewhat substantial, um, change, I would say. So, we, uh, the, the current charter says that removal of the city manager can be made by a majority, so three of you guys. Um, we want that to be basically a supermajority, four of y'all, for removal of the city manager. Uh, again, I've talked about this before, continuity is what we're looking at. We don't want an election to have two new council members come in, um, and then, you know, one other council member is all you need for a complete regime change as far as the city manager is concerned. Uh, the idea is continuity for the city, and we don't want one election to send the city into some kind of freefall because we've got two new guys in who want to change things around real quickly. We want it to be more of a, a whole of the city council, representing the whole of the city of Navasota to make that decision. Uh, we also changed the language, uh, about residency within a reasonably prompt period as determined by you guys. So, I know Jason had to move here when he was hired, um, and we didn't want there to be, we, we didn't want to put, they have to be living in Navasota within one month of being hired. We didn't want to put a deadline in place, um, a specific deadline in the charter. Uh, we wanted it to be ter- determined by you guys based on the, the facts of that particular hire. If it's gonna take a while because of where they're living or what their situation is, then y'all could grant some grace in that scenario. Uh, y'all can have a general guideline that y'all usually abide by when you're hiring a new city manager, but at the end of the day, y'all get to make that decision based on that particular person instead of being bound by some number we choose to put in the charter in 2024.
Yeah, that's, that's usually all, I mean, heavy discussion during interviews anyway, and kind of things are kind of worked out before and then, so, yeah, there's, there's plenty of time for that to be dealt with.
Okay. All right, so next is section two. All right, so this talks about, um, assistant city managers. Uh, he's able, it says that the city manager is able to, um, we added, uh, add or, um, remove one or more assistant city managers, um, to serve under him. Um, he determines, again, uh, the city manager determines the salaries and wages of the employees of the city. That's reiterated in this section. Um, like we talked about, we changed the section where the city council determines the appointed members. This is talking about the city manager determining the employees' compensation, um, and reiterates that y'all determine the appointed officers. So kind of cleans that up about who's determining who gets paid what. All right. And then we are done with Jason and moving on to article six. Any questions about article five before we move on?
Wasn't there something about his, his fitness?
That's called qualification.
It's actually, that's a qualification, yes.
Round is, might have to do with...
Round is a size.
Like an exercise program?
Round is a size.
It's a shape.
It is a shape, sorry, it's a shape.
Hair is a shape.
I believe the council gets to make the determination.
Did you hear what she said?
Uh, what'd you say?
Say it again for the record.
Hair is a shape.
Oh. Not an apple.
I know, I know.
You just thought we were done with you. You were just getting started.
If I didn't love him so much, I swear.
Okay, um, article six is next, and fortunately it is short because it is everybody's favorite taxation. Um, section two is the first change that we've got. Uh, so, we basically added some language in there that says the tax assessor collector gets to determine this stuff, uh, because my understanding is that the city is not issuing receipts, taking payments. Uh, the tax assessor collector's office is the one doing that, so we clarified that paragraph to say, hey, uh, if you're dealing with taxes, that's where you need to go. You don't need to come up to the city offices and say, hey, I need to pay my taxes. Uh, so we're just clarifying that with that paragraph. Um, and then section three, um, we, we deleted the, um, the language about the city tax office. Um, I don't know if y'all have ever been to the city tax office, but it doesn't exist. So, uh, we deleted that reference to the city tax office.
Did we used to have that?
Yes, in this old building here. Pat Hamilton or Pat Shedd used to be our tax collector.
That was way before mine.
Hell of an age here now.
There are still some cities that collect taxes.
Yes.
That's true.
We did for a while.
But we do not and have not for a while, uh, and so...
And propose not.
Do what?
And propose not to.
Yes.
The agency that does it, and that's all they do, and I'm sure they do it much better than we could.
And that would be an additional job for the city as well.
And if you wanted to go back to having one, this deletion would not prevent you from, in the future, establishing a tax office, so.
Right, it's just referencing, um, the, I guess, the, the current tax office, uh, which we don't have. So we're just cleaning that up for clarity for the public when they're reading this. Yeah, it's, like Carrie said, there's nothing in there that prevents y'all from, from doing that in the future. Okay, any other questions about, uh, sections, article six before I move on? All right.
What, what is that under section four, occupation taxes on?
Let's see, let me look that up.
That is really just a clarification that, because when you look at that language, it's, it's again antiquated.
Yes.
Like occupations, callings, businesses, and provisions, uh, taxing, um...
Is that like?
It's a grammatical thing. So it's, it's really just saying, hey, if, uh, if you're an entity that is subject to, um, taxation at the state level, an occupation tax, that the city may also assess half of that tax against, uh, that particular business.
Like an electrician or a plumber, or what are we talking about?
Um, it, it would be like, uh, amusements, I think alcoholic, alcoholic beverage code allows for, uh, these types of occupation taxes, um, those types of things. So, it's a pretty common revenue source for cities.
That, that one is, I, I think, truly just, um, changing the language to be more up-to-date, uh, and normal, um...
Yeah, I just didn't know what it, what it was.
Right. Okay, article seven, uh, municipal court, city attorney, legal counsel. Uh, so number, section number two, uh, is the first change. Uh, so there's a question, a- and this is, we're punting to you guys, so we're gonna, I'm gonna tell you what we talked about and then y'all get to make the call on it. So there was a question about whether the municipal judge should be required to be a citizen of the city of Navasota or a resident of Grimes County, if there should be a change. Uh, I believe it's currently, um, city of Navasota, uh, but there's talk about maybe changing it to the county as a whole. I will tell you that in our discussions, we were not in favor of changing it to the county as a whole. Um, from my understanding, filling that position has not been a problem in the past, uh, finding someone in the city of Navasota who'd be willing to do it. I think the discussion was raised, um, if we were not able to find somebody in Navasota, what do we do? And folks having to practice in multiple jurisdictions and, and, uh, she left, I was gonna say, which she's currently doing. Um, but, the feeling in our discussions was if it's gonna be somebody dealing with municipal violations in Navasota, it should be somebody from Navasota. And if there's not been a problem finding someone in Navasota before, then there's no need to change it in the future. However, we did not feel strongly enough about it to recommend necessarily that it be changed. Um, for sure, we kind of wanted to punt it to you guys, tell you how we felt about it and let y'all make the call on that based on what y'all think is best in your experience, but we were not necessarily in favor of changing it.
Well, I can see both sides, because if, um, one day there may not be a qualified person in this, you know, in the city, but I'd prefer that it be, personally, that it be someone from here, because they'd be familiar with local...
But if that was a problem, city council?
Uh, yeah, can't you...
If, if it's in the charter where they're...
Right.
Sorry. Yeah, if it's in the charter that they have to be a citizen, then the council would have no discretion to appoint somebody that didn't have that qualification, so, um...
It certainly seems like we probably would have more options as our population continues to grow versus less options. So I would be in favor of being a resident of the city since we're paying them our tax dollars.
I agree.
Yeah. So you could even, you could even take a, just a little bit step further and say, at least within the ETJ.
Oh, I think in the city is pretty restrictive.
Okay.
And, and I'll say, Mayor, what you were saying is exactly the conversation that we had. Well, you know, we can see both sides of it, but we really feel like, feel more comfortable with a citizen of Navasota serving in that position. A- and I agree with you, Mr. Foltz, about, we're only growing, we're not getting any smaller. And we've got more businesses and professionals moving to this area. Uh, and I think we contemplated that as well in our meetings, that in theory, the, uh, the pool to pick someone from is gonna grow.
And I would say the larger that the city gets, the more inclined you would be to want someone that is from the city, because that's, I mean, people that have to answer to the citizens do a, do a much better job when they have to see them every day.
Okay.
Yeah, the fact, the fact that our current municipal judge is serving several jurisdictions is not our problem, it's the other jurisdictions.
Basically. Right. And, and that, that actually takes us to the, the next, um, update i- in that section. Um, so it says that the, uh, the judge shall not hold any other public office except that of notary public. We are suggesting that that be removed. Our current municipal judge is, as we were just talking about, serving in multiple jurisdictions. Uh, we didn't want that to be an issue, uh, with her continuing to serve in that role as long as she chooses to. Um, and it's also, again, that is very restrictive, um, that particular language, but really it was more geared at, uh, what is currently happening and what may happen in the future with the municipal judge serving multiple jurisdictions. We don't want that to cause a problem with, uh, with our judge, uh, being able to serve in that role.
No, because then it would, you know, it's also says, you know, we have the ability to remove him at any point for any cause anyway, so if there were something...
Would it not be, sorry, would it not be...
So really, we don't want her serving, or we would not want the judge serving in another elected capacity, but if she was going...
That, I would say elected would be the wording needed.
But if she was going to serve as a judge somewhere else, that's fine. I just, she shouldn't be the DA and...
Right.
The, um, municipal judge.
I would just say that it would be a public, elected public office.
So that number two would, that, yeah, the two would say, shall not hold any elected public office, except for, well, it wouldn't even say except for...
Pointed to an office, you know.
Think, think about, um, Judge LaFleur. You know, he was elected to the justice of the peace position, and there's a, uh, there's a constitutional exemption for justices of the peace. I guess he had a good lobby at some point that, uh, got this, but they can serve and, they actually can serve in, as, he could serve legally as the municipal court judge, which he did for many years. Um, I think we just, what I'm saying is, we would just need to be careful about what this says so that, um, you know, once Judge Gruner is no longer serving in that position, if there's a local justice of the peace that the council wants to appoint that actually lives in the city, we would just want to be careful with the language to not prohibit that.
Why would you not turn it from a not to a could serve as a judicial figure in other jurisdictions or something like that?
Or, or even say that, um, shall not hold any other elected public position, except what's allowed by the... except what's allowed by the state, which is already allowed by the state for a JP to do that, it's written in the law.
Mm-hmm, it is.
So, our, our charter would not.
Depends on how the, the, if it's a negative or positive, I think, perhaps, um. Let me chew on that for a minute, um, and answer.
I'm just saying, may serve as an, as a judicial, something in other jurisdictions. And then that way, she, she can go anywhere, or he, or whatever.
I, I, I think this is for clarification purposes, because there, there aren't, there is an interpretation of state law that would already allow that to happen. So that she is not necessarily prevent, she is not prevented from serving those other jurisdictions at this point. But this creates a question about that, and so, I think what the, the total review committee wanted to do is just make sure that that was clear with respect to, um, the other positions that she is serving in. And it, as was pointed out, that's their problem, if they have a local provision that would prevent her from doing so. But this, um, state law would say that she can do that currently. I think one of the reasons for this change was just to make sure that it was clear to the public what, what she could and couldn't do.
Right, but I don't think that we really want her to serve in the capacity of an, of an elected official.
Yes.
That's.
Yes, I guess, what I'm saying there, I'm thinking of an appointed municipal court judge position. So, um, I do agree it would be important to say, to, to further define that in terms of elected. Um, elective.
I mean, if you took that out and I decided I wanted to be municipal judge while I sat in this seat, there would be no language to prevent that. I mean, we would have ethics, but we wouldn't have law.
There, there actually is some case law that would prevent that, but, um, we might as well be clear in.
In the charter.
The charter. I know. Lawyer answers here. But, 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 that would be a, that would be a, what's called, uh, conflicting loyalties. That's also a problem, because you would appoint the person to that position, and so, that's a problem, uh, under, uh, current case law. But I, I think what I'm hearing from the, from the council is, you would want to, you're really concerned about an elected, uh, position and the judge serving in an elected position, um.
Other than what's allowed by state law.
I was about to say.
But the thing, but the, but the council's the one that's appointing the judge. So, by removing it, shall not holding, you, that gives you the authority to make that decision whenever it occurs.
Except policing, if the council doesn't like that, then you can.
Yeah.
Then you can not appoint that person, you don't, you're under no duty to appoint.
Right.
Reasonably, though, the, the main occurrence of this would be the current municipal judge leaves office type thing, and we have to put somebody. And the quick solution is to go to a JP in the county type thing and ask him to do what John LaFlore did for those years. So, if that's already allowed by state law, then do we wanna allow it? W- we could prohibit it, I guess.
So, I think if the, if I may, if the council wanted to leave the language in there, leave some language in there, perhaps something like, shall not hold any other elected public office except as provided by state law, or something like that.
I would say that, yeah.
Um, 'cause like what, what Carrie was just talking about with the JPs, um, that would cover it, but also seems to cover y'all's concerns about an elected position.
I think so.
'Cause a lot of people may not realize that it, it's not a full-time position either, it's more of a, kind of a part-time.
I think it's as full-time as you want it to be.
Well, I suppose. But, I mean, when you're holding court, you're not holding court every day.
As we grow, that will change.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
If the council's comfortable with that language, it sounds, yeah, it sounds great.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I think it clarifies it a little better.
And also, I understand you wanna keep it as, uh, to be a resident of the city in Navasota too.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And I think it keeps our future council honest.
Okay.
True.
Okay, anything else on section two before I move on? All right, next is section ten. Um, we, uh, when I was reading over this section, um, it talks about the county attorney may be able to come in and prosecute cases, um, i- in the city, and the county attorney doesn't do that here. Um, so, we were, uh, w- we decided to delete that language, um, and, um, oh, and we talked about the district attorney. Uh, basically, I said, the county attorney doesn't do that, so there's a district attorney come in. Um, and I, I think Carrie said that the district attorney has the authority to do that under.
It's not, it's not automatic. Um, the council, um, the council could, and before I started prosecuting, uh, as legal counsel for the city, uh, district attorney's office did do that. There was a, there was a contract between the city and the district attorney's office to do that. So, um, the district attorney provision says, the district attorney shall attend each term in session of the district courts and all other courts except municipal courts. So, there's no automatic provision like was attempted for the county attorney. The, the law says specifically, that's not automatic where the DA steps in. If the, if the, if the city wants the DA to prosecute at municipal court, it's not automatic. That does not prevent the city from entering into a contract with the DA's office to do the prosecution. So, um, that's, that's why we're suggesting deleting this provision related to the county attorney and not replacing it with any reference to the DA, because you can always contract with that entity to do the prosecution work.
And you wouldn't have to change the charter to do that.
Right.
Okay.
So, just cleaning up what is actually happening here. Uh, all right, that's it for Article seven. Any other questions about that article before I move on to eight? All right, finances, okay. Um, section two is the first change. Um, we, it was brought up again, this is similar to the, um, appointment process. Uh, we want the, uh, we're suggesting that the proposed budget be posted on the website prior to meetings that it's going to be discussed at, for the public to be able to look at, um, and be able to come in and make informed comments to the city, um, be able to understand what they're talking about at those meetings. Um, I came to a meeting recently where the budget was being discussed, and holy moly! Um, so. Um, so, having that, the ability to, to look over that ahead of time, um, i- if you wanted to as a citizen, uh, just that transparency there, um, for, for the citizens of Navasota to be able to look at that. Even if they don't come to a meeting, just know what's going on with their city and the budget.
And it's nothing, nothing of a change, 'cause we've already been.
Already, we, we started doing that. Um, the state law will more than likely at some point change and require it anyway. 'Cause currently, they, they require, um, that you keep the budget, you file it with the city secretary's office, um, the certain time limit, and then you also, uh, hold a public hearing, certain time for that. Uh, and then there's all the requirements you have to go through to approve the budget. And so, there's already requirements out there, this is just saying, hey, we want some transparency for you to put the budget document out there. And I, I can't tell you that, that's been done in the past, that it has since I've been here, so, but I can't tell you what in the past has been done.
Okay.
When, when does this have to be posted?
I'm sorry?
When does this have to be posted?
I think it, um.
Posted by, uh, prior to the meeting or meetings at which the, this will be discussed. So, the first time we meet for the budget retreat, so it'd have to be posted before then.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about two hours or two weeks.
Well, so, um, generally, it's the, I mean, we're, we're required to give it to y'all seventy-two hours, so the public will have it seventy-two hours for sure.
Okay, so seventy-two hours would apply?
Well.
It, it would apply, it, uh, you know, technically, the way the, the wording is, is almost posted, you know, one minute before the meeting starts.
That's, that's where I'm getting at.
Yes, sir. So, um, if it's seventy-two hours, now, if you wanted to, if you wanted to insert a timeframe in here, um, we could certainly do that.
I think it should be, 'cause it doesn't do any good to post it on however ahead of time.
If the goal is transparency, make sure that there is transparency.
Yeah.
Basically.
Councilmember Gessner, what, what time, are you thinking seventy-two hours?
Seventy-two hours, when you, you post the notices, so.
All right.
Keep the continuity.
At the minimum.
Any other comments from, from councilmen?
If by chance it doesn't happen, and it's seventy-one hours, then what happens?
Yeah.
You have to wait until the next meeting?
I think then you're, there's no, quote, violation of law, and if somebody wanted to go to court, get a man- mandamus action, something like that, try to force you to do it. I think, I think it's, it, it would be a violation of the charter that would be, it's not like a council member's doing it, so it wouldn't be subject to the removal type provisions, those sorts of things. So, I think it's, it's, you're just telling city staff and the public, like, this is what we're gonna do, this is a requirement, we're going to comply in good faith, uh, but the, the, you know, the sky's not gonna fall if it doesn't happen. But it's what we're gonna do.
Preclude any action on the budget.
Well, so, yeah, so, again, before you have the budget meeting, um, we're not, it's not gonna give you, we don't, we just don't do an agenda. We post the agenda packet. And so, the agenda packet goes out with the budget documents already in there. So, we're required to do the agenda posting seventy-two hours, and so, the agenda is gonna be have a packet associated with it, so you're gonna have it with it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, sometimes stuff happens.
And.
Is there any way to add language to that, though, that says that in seventy-two hours?
Yeah.
Within good faith, or, you know, wanna.
Well, I mean, just, just, I'd say just leave the seventy-two hours, and we'll, I mean.
Yeah, when y'all get the packet, I'll go and put it online.
Right.
I, I think at the end of the day, what Carrie was saying is, say it is posted seventy-one hours in advance, it would take somebody seeking some kind of action against you guys and going to court. Um, but i- if y'all were concerned about it, perhaps you could put language in there that says, um, failure to post within seventy-two hours shall not preclude the council from, uh, reviewing the budget or X, Y, Z, um, so long as a good faith effort was made to get the budget posted timely or something like that. Uh, if the council was concerned. But I, I think what Carrie was saying is, the likelihood of there being any repercussions uh, for, for failure to get it posted exactly seventy-two hours ahead of time is really slim.
As someone who reads her email daily from people who are very angry with the city, I would say that that language should be there.
And I don't see those emails, so I will take your word for it.
I have a question, I just wanna make sure that in the charter, it's gonna say seventy-two hours.
So, the, I think the concern is, say they, they don't get it posted seventy-two hours ahead of time, does that preclude them from acting on or reviewing or doing what they needed to do with the budget at that meeting? That's the concern. So, what we're suggesting is perhaps some language that, so long as a good faith effort was made to get it posted at least seventy-two hours ahead of time, they can still move forward with what they needed to do with the budget a- at that meeting.
Yeah, for example, if there was a technical problem with the website and it couldn't be posted.
Bad weather.
City staff's trying to get it posted, IT person can't get it posted, even though that person is really trying hard to get it posted, and it's just not working, so, that's a good point.
So, does y'all have a hard copy available?
Oh, sure.
If you could say something. Well, I don't know, could then everybody make one more.
We can say, like, a hard copy's available for inspection, we've done that before, something to that effect.
I just wanna make sure that even if it's a good thing, that it was made, and still didn't. I'm just trying to prevent that, there's no definition of.
You would still have the opportunity to be here at the meeting and part of the open meeting and part of the discussion with a hard copy. Why would we not be able to vote on it at that point?
Well, I want. Seventy-two hours before you do that, even if it's made of good, you know.
I, I think what we were trying to get at with this was, uh, some transparency to the public, but not necessarily, uh, if I, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but not necessarily a hindrance upon the council.
From taking care of the business, yeah, that's not.
My understanding of our discussions was to just make sure that that was out there, and.
It's already, that's, this is adding a level of transparency.
Exactly.
That we do not have right now.
And I, it, I think you would be hard-pressed to find somebody to say that two hours ahead of time, rather than seventy-two, was good faith.
Well, there are other options available to them too. They could, uh, call the city secretary and say, hey, I, I don't see a copy of the agenda on the website. Suzie could email them the copy, she could say, come by the office, pick one up, there are other options available to that person. So, we're just really talking about access on the website. And, and if, and if the city's, you know, doing its due diligence and making a good faith effort, and, you know, that's undefined, but I think it's a, it's a term of art that if you look at cases that interpret that term, um, in the state of Texas, that it, it really does require more, it's, you have to make some effort, has to be, um, you know, with, with, with clean hands and a mind that is trying to get this done, you know, objectively, rather than just, you know, you're not just blowing it off. That's not the standard. Um, the city does have to make effort, um, reasonable effort to get that done. So, I think it's a, to me, it's a, a reasonable standard to set.
Mayor and council, so, local government code, section one oh two point oh oh five, proposed budget filed with municipal clerk for public inspection. Budget officer shall file the proposed budget with municipal clerk before the thirtieth day before the date the governing body of the municipality makes its little tax levy for the fiscal year. So, if you take the second meeting, um, in September, and back that up thirty days, you're already required to already have that filed with, um, the, the, the city secretary.
Well, in advance of the seventy-two hour.
Yeah, you're correct, and, and before the seventy-two hour. So, there is, state law already provides a specific date.
State law comes in there somewhere, I'm sure. They're looking out for us.
Usually sometime mid-August when they have to file a preliminary budget with me.
All right, anything else on the budget, section two? All right. Section four, financial records, we kinda cleaned, cleaned this up a little bit. Um, it talks about the books, um, we changed that to financial records. And then it says, the language was the most approved fashion, that was the language that was in there, is how the, the financial records were going to be kept. And we changed that to the generally accepted accounting principles and standards adopted by governmental accounting standards boards applicable to cities. And I think that's what y'all currently do, Jason, so we're just updating the language of what y'all currently do, and I think what's required, uh, of the city to do. Instead of the most approved fashion. All right, number five, uh, it's talking about monthly reports, um, being published in the newspaper. Um, we took out the section about, um, the monthly reports being, uh, put in the newspaper, 'cause, oh my goodness, that would be expensive.
Good lord.
Okay.
The examiner would like it, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. All right, uh, number, section number seven, temporary borrowing, we deleted that section. Uh, my understanding is that's not something that's been done, or you guys have any intention to do. Um, and kind of, Jason was talking about, basically, how the city is run, you don't wanna have to, y'all are not set up to be in a position where you're gonna need to temporarily borrow money. Um, you don't ever wanna be in that position, and so, having that option in there in the charter, uh, to be able to temporarily borrow money, kinda gives you some wiggle room, I guess, if you're not making the best financial decisions for the city. Uh, and if we take that out, kinda puts it back on you guys to make the good financial decisions. Uh, but, um, let's see. But I think that the, the general idea was, that's not something that we wanna do as a city, and not something that's currently being done. All right. Okay, I think that is it on eight, Article eight, moving on to Article nine. Any questions on eight before I move on? Okay. Article nine, looks like we've just got one. Um, this is similar to, uh, the readings in meetings for general ordinances. Uh, again, economy for the city, uh, for you guys, changing the number of, number of readings before final passage from three to two times. We felt like, with how things are done now, technology, what's available to, uh, the citizens of Navasota, the info. are done now, technology, what's available to the citizens of Navasota, the information's going to be out there. The notice is going to be out there. If we've got a franchise coming in that needs to be voted on, that folks are going to know. And two, readings would be enough. And three is not going to be, not necessarily going to add anything to benefit. The two guarantees, not guarantees, but gives the citizens more ability to be there and know what's going on. But three wouldn't necessarily add anything for the citizens, especially since we're recommending changing normal ordinances and such down to one reading at a meeting. This gives you that added reading to make sure everybody knows it's important.
Do we know why it was three?
I would imagine, because originally, normal ordinances were two, and they wanted to make this more important, so they made it three, if I had to guess.
I think that's true. Yeah. It's such a significant, when you're entering into a franchise, typically, they were 30 years, 40 years, and so it was a big deal. Nowadays, franchises tend to be shorter in length. But the idea is, Ashley says, let's get as much attention on this as possible, slow the process down, give everybody a chance to be deliberate about the decision-making process. So, that's why historically it was handled that way.
And that was it for franchises. Any questions on Article 9 before I move on?
Yeah. Can I go up to the monthly reports on Section 5 then? Well, we said that we're going to delete the provision by putting it in the newspaper and everything.
Ah. Section 5 of Article 8.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Well, if we could say that the, under the monthly reports, that council is required to get a monthly report?
There will still, there's still a requirement for a monthly report to be given upon request if it's, if it's desired. So, you could direct Jason...
That's from Section 4. It's already there.
And Section 5 as well.
And Section 5.
Which says that you, you can, if you desire a monthly report, you could direct Jason to give that to you on a monthly basis. So, councilmember Harris said, I believe that's already covered. All this does is it says, you don't have to publish that in the newspaper when it's required. So, you could actually right now direct Jason to give you a monthly report in this, in accordance with this section.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. I think we are on Article 10. First one is Section 4. So, there was some language in there about, so this is investment of sinking funds. Basically, limited to, limited you guys to investment in US bonds or US government agencies having full faith and credit of the US government. Kind of limited on where you guys could invest. So, we changed that language to compliance with applicable law, your own investment policy, and any amendments you make to it. So, give you guys a lot more wiggle room on where to invest stuff at. And also, that's kind of antiquated, too.
That's very dated, isn't it? Wow.
Yes. Yeah. That, I think we kind of laughed when reading that one.
I'm surprised it didn't say war bonds.
That, that was the last part of the committee. They took that one out.
If I could, let me ask a question about that. So, in our ordinances, we have the year next to each ordinance, and then the year that it was modified or introduced. In the charter, is that required? Or not required? Could that be done? It'd be interesting to see where some of these came from, what year were they last modified. And so, when you're looking through it, you could say, oh, this one, this specific item was modified in 2024, or this one was from 1970.
I think in the code of ordinances...
In the code of ordinances, it is. But in, in the charter, there's nothing here that shows the year. I'm just asking if that's something that's normal or could be done. Just as we're doing this in future years, we can say, ah, this one was, you know, we haven't touched this in 50 years.
Like an appendix, maybe, or something.
Or that.
Or the adoption date, because the last one was adopted in 2007.
Yeah. But I don't know that each section would be, would have been modified. And I don't know, it's important, it's just interesting.
It, it does happen. There are some cities that do that. They keep a historical tracking, I guess, for lack of a better term, similar to the ordinances. Like, when you read through the ordinance book, you can see when it's last amended. That can certainly be done. If, if you want to see that happen, you know, city staff can make that happen. It wouldn't need to be part of the, you know, charter amendment process or anything, but, yeah, we can make that happen.
It would be interesting to see, especially when it comes time to look at the charter again. Hey, this hadn't been touched in 35 years.
It's basically a good historical document.
Yeah.
Right. It'll start this, and this, the whole thing's been changed or adopted, because we went through everything on this go around.
All right.
Oh, you listening?
Section 11, again, is us attorneys shaking our heads. So, it's, basically, it says that if somebody violated what certain funds were supposed to be used for, if they were basically mishandling certain funds, that they will be deemed guilty of a felony. So, I, I mean, I don't know if you would take a document to the judge and say, please sign this. They're guilty of a felony.
That must have happened long ago.
Or, so, we just took out the, the language that said deemed guilty of a felony and left "subject to prosecution" in there. So, if somebody did what they weren't supposed to do, they can still get in trouble. We're just not telling a judge.
Something must have happened.
Hey, it's a felony. Yeah, something must have happened.
That would be some good history to do.
Yeah, that would be.
When was this act that?
What brought that on?
All right. That's it for 10. Article 10. Any questions about that before I move on? Okay. Article 11. Let's see. Is about elections. And I think we took that whole thing out. Article 11, I believe, because we had other sections that addressed elections, and this wasn't necessary. So, we just took the entire section out.
State, state law overrides so much of that.
Right.
Yes. There, there's state law that tells us what has to be done. And then there's already sections that we covered at length going on about the cycles that you guys are on and what type of votes going to be necessary, how we're going to do a runoff, and all that good stuff. So, it's already well described in the charter. Plus, you've got state law. So, this just seemed kind of superfluous. All right. Almost done. Article 12. Let's see. Ah, this was, I, I remember talking about this. So, these were kind of interesting, these sections. Again, it kind of wonder what happened. And perhaps it was the, when the charter was first created or a major overhaul was done. But there was some language in there. Section 3 and Section 4 were basically talking about if you're kind of, if it's already in effect and we changed the charter, then it could still be in effect, even if the charter said that it's not in effect anymore. Those two, two sections were kind of like, why have a charter at all if we have that language in there? Like, people who are elected, ordinances that may or may not be in, in effect, sections and articles of the charter that may or may not be in effect. It kind of said that the council could go back and go, oh, we actually wanted that still, even though it was removed from the charter. We'd like, we're, we're just going to bring it back in to the charter. And so, it's talking about continuity of stuff after a charter is adopted. We think that perhaps this was put in there when the charter was originally adopted, or maybe when an overhaul was had on it at some point to kind of keep the, the status quo. But the way it was written kind of takes away the point of the charter and takes away y'all's power and, and kind of the people's power, because the, the council could come in and make some weird changes with that. So, anyways, all that being said, 3 and 4, we are recommending be deleted, because we've got plenty of language in the charter to talk about who's going to be in office when. And we don't want somebody to come in and go, oh, that's not in the charter anymore. Let's add it back in without an election. That would be a problem. Section 5 is our last one.
Actually, that's where a lot of that language was about, hey, if there was a mistake and we accidentally omitted a provision, that it would, we could deem, the council could deem that it was actually still valid. So, that was very, very strange language. Yeah. And so, so I think...
Lawyers, the lawyers made us do it. We didn't really do it.
That's right.
Yep. Probably.
Terry knows nothing.
The council approved.
Instead of the voters, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And so, but as Ashley mentioned, when you look back at the, just the general power, powers provisions toward the beginning of the charter, we feel like those provisions are really adequate and sufficient and helpful in defining the powers of the city justly. And then if you look at specific provisions in terms of other powers of the city. So, that was a really confusing section to all of us in terms of, why is that in there? It seems very illegal. Improper. I'll say improper.
Thank you, members of the committee, for your, your hard work and efforts and bringing some really good things to us for consideration. Thank you.
Y'all did a great job.
So, Mayor and council, on this, if you have any questions or any concerns after you look into the detail, please email me as soon as possible, so I can get those over to the committee and to Kerry, because we do need to start heading toward the finish line about calling the election and what the ballot language, because that's something that Kerry's going to start working on, is the ballot language. So, the sooner I know about any changes that you might want that we haven't discussed, we, we need to have that so we can, when we have a meeting, we can go over those changes.
Does this have to be bilingual?
Uh, does it have to be bilingual?
I think so.
I think it does.
Everything you do in the election.
And, and also Kerry will have to put in there any item on the ballot language that has a, a dollar amount attached to it. So, we do know at least one of them's going to have a dollar amount, because we, we're adding in the $100. So, that, he'll have to look at that. So, the sooner you can get me in, any comments, please do that. Please don't wait till the last minute, because I don't want to put that on Kerry. And again, thanks to the committee, thanks Kerry and staff that worked on it. It is a, a long two, three months, but appreciate it. It was well worth it. Thank you, Ashley.
I do have, I do have a quick question. I'm sorry. So, there's a lot of deletion and maybe changing up of some of the words. I don't see a section that needed to be added. Was there nothing that the committee felt like was a whole miss, like that we've never had in our charter, that maybe we need, or this is good?
Nope.
I mean, clearly, it's not recommended if it was, but...
I'll say the one big thing we talked about that wasn't necessarily included, but then I think we decided when talking with Kerry that it didn't need to be included in the charter, but perhaps by ordinance or some other action of the council. One of the big hot-button issues was sidewalks. I'll, I'll tell you guys that. And maintenance of sidewalks. Who's responsible for maintenance? Does the public know who's responsible for maintenance? So, we had a long conversation about that. And I know from, from past meetings that that's one of the things that the council is currently working on, is additional sidewalks and, and fixing sidewalks and all that good stuff. So, we determined that putting it in the charter was improper, because that's not what the charter's for. But I will tell y'all, in our discussions, that was a big hot-button issue. But that was the only thing I can think of that came up that wasn't included in the charter that we spent a lot of time talking about.
And there's a state law that already dictates what we're allowed to do or what we're supposed to be able to do with boards of commissioners.
Good.
I'm impressed that two attorneys got through all of that in an hour and a half.